I don't believe we have any agenda additions or modifications. The last agenda was all set up. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So, session.
Any discussion? All in favor? I will start with item five, Mr. Price.
I'm gonna ask maybe some others to join me as I missed a few days of some really good quality events that happened in the district. I did have the opportunity to attend the spring musical. It was just delightful. They knocked themselves out. I laughed so much and I know we had just really great attendance. This year more than ever, we heard incredible feedback from the senior citizen production. So I don't know if it was a production that really knocked their socks off. For some reason this year they became incredibly vocal. But how to succeed in business without even trying, I think it was as good as any Broadway production you could see. Just incredibly talented individuals and I know we had Mr. Sheehan in the play as well and...
Well, not me, but...
You know, Mr. Sheehan.
It was just, it was off the charts great. I know we had the string festival and the elementary plays. I don't know if anybody wanted to comment on the string festival or the elementary plays.
Yeah, I went to see the Little Mermaid over at Raff Raff Smith and the kids were cute. They were running up and down the halls and their costume was fantastic. Very involved and it was a lot of fun to go see.
Great. Great. And I heard all the other ones were very successful as well. So that was all I had at the time, at this time.
Alrighty. Next item on the agenda is superintendent's report.
Yeah, and just for my report, I am gonna ask that we follow up briefly. At our last presentation, the board had requested a little more information about the time clocks and our ability to comply with the Affordable Health Care Act as well as the substitute calling service. I know that we sent you the backup materials, but if you had any questions based on the backup materials, I know Cora is ready to address the substitute caller and weighing the time clocks. If you have any questions after reading the backup material.
Okay.
Good?
Thanks for the information.
Very good. So at this point, we can move into our security upgrades with Forrest and Elliot.
Sheehan, thanks. Oh, okay. I guess I'll start.
You don't need to switch it, Forrest. Just look at it in one.
Good evening, everybody. We'll try to keep this brief and concise, but this is our update on the capital upgrades to the district's security systems. We have a small capital project we've been working on. Just a little background on what we have in district. We did talk about this a little bit last week.
You don't need to switch it, Forrest. Just look at it in one.
Good evening, everybody. We'll try to keep this brief and concise, but this is our update on the capital upgrades to the district's security systems. We have a small capital project we've been working on. Just a little background on what we have in district. We did talk about this a little bit last week. Sorry about that. Okay, so brief history. Our original security system was installed in 2009. In 2013, the district's safety committee, project team facilities there before identified some needed security upgrades. We were able to accomplish this with leftover funds from capital phase two A that were funded allocated. There was some other security work done and that freed up some cash for us to be able to do this project here. The scope, I will let Forrest explain, as he knows a little bit better than I do.
Sure. Thanks, Elliot. So along with this upgrade, we had to take into account quite a few different options, some of which were that our video servers have been running since 2009, so it was time for an upgrade. And we looked at additional storage. We actually stored additional content longer time. We looked at software upgrades, so it was time. The software in 2009 was no longer relevant, so everything's updated with the latest software. We also looked at areas in the buildings that we hadn't looked at before for coverage. And what was identified through the SAVE and our other committees was to improve visibility at the entrances to our buildings. So there are new cameras covering each of the lobby spaces as well as you can see here, new video intercoms. And finally, as part of the enhancements, we started to look at the existing system and where do we need to replace cameras to keep the system running smoothly, keep video flowing, and, you know, be able to see those areas that are critical to us.
Still you?
Still me. Sorry about that. So everything is installed. All cameras have been installed except for just a couple that we've reallocated or we're gonna be moving around, but all the brand new ones are in and operational. You know, we are still working through a little bit of configuration as we iron out the things and we're working with building staff at this point and like it shows there, there's staff training. You know, just today I was meeting with our FDR security team to go through how the system works and how they can make best use of it, so.
Okay. Camera replacement cycle. We did touch on this at the last board meeting and we brought in some hard data. I promised I would bring in good numbers. At the last board meeting, I said we had more than 60 cameras and we do. We have over 200. The 60 camera number that was stuck in my head is the high school number, right about 60 cameras, just at that one location. But the times do fall in with what we discussed at the last meeting. This is just a little bit more specific information. The state will reimburse us up to $2,000 per camera, up to a gross total of $35,000 per year. And we did discuss that during the administrative and program portion of the budget presentation at the last board meeting. This is how Forrest and I have calculated out what our replacement cycle can look like. As we said, the cameras went in in 2009. In 2014, they started to die off, not necessarily an alarming rate, but we started to see end-of-life things happening after five years. So five years is the longest cycle we would be willing to entertain. It would cost us roughly $38,000. Again, with the $35,000 reimbursement from the state, it's a net cost of just about $3,500. If we do it at a four-year cycle, our net costs increase to $13,000 per year. If we do a three-year cycle, our net costs go to $29,000. Again, we did roughly, I wanna say between 5% and 10% of our cameras replaced with this project. So one of the questions that came up was if we, if we, the board, not we us, but if you, the board, allowed us to fund a replacement cycle of this caliber, would these cameras actually be used or are they gonna sit on a shelf? And we have plenty of cameras to replace. We're going from roughly half a megapixel to over three megapixels in terms of resolution. So the caliber of the video that we're seeing now is incredible compared to what's existing and there'd be plenty to replace. We would prioritize it with those that are not working, those that have limited function, and then again, just those that are aging out. So ideally, we'd love to shoot for a four-year cycle at a net cost of $13,000 to the district, but even if we push it and we go to a five-year, we're still only gonna cost the district less than $4,000 a year once we get our reimbursables back. So...
So just to wrap up, we're continuously now talking, like my training session today, our work with the SAVE committee. As we learn more about the camera system and what it can do, we're gonna look to enhance that. So there's collaboration with that committee, with our other safety initiatives going on in the building. And, you know, just as we look to close out, you know, just in a few days, we'll be actually closing this project out hopefully and moving forward.
Yes, also. Thank you all. Any questions for us?
Yes. Do you have any outside service for the equipment or is it all in-house maintenance, replaces and upgrades?
The replacement cycle costs are based on the unit cost of purchase for in-kind replacement, which basically means the wire's already there, the bracket's there.
No, but I mean, your department does the service. It's an in-house.
We don't do extensive service to the cameras. A lot of it's programming stuff.
No, I'm talking about replacement.
Replacement, for a capital project, we have a contract to do it. Forward, we would actually do as well.
Okay. The other thing on the reimbursement, is that for cameras or equipment only, can you get it for labor costs also?
I believe the $2,000 number does include labor. For us, for the volume of cameras we have, we would have to...
Is that calculated, that's your...
No, the calculation is just for materials because we did this for in-kind replacements. So our costs can double when it comes to cabling and mounting a new camera in a new location. When we're just taking an old one down and putting a new one up, it's pretty straightforward in terms of installation.
So there's potential for more savings? If you submit for your labor?
Oh, theoretically, yeah. If we submit for the labor, we can do less cameras but get more.
Oh, $35,000 is the max for the year?
Correct.
Okay, whether it be equipment or combination of both?
Right, so just for round numbers, if I buy 10 cameras installed or 20 cameras, just materials, as long as I stay under the $2,000 unit costs or the $35,000 gross costs were covered.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Yeah. Did I understand correctly that you're replacing cameras that have roughly half a megapixel with cameras that, did I hear 3.8 megapixels?
Roughly three megapixels are the ones that we're standardizing for interior cameras, correct?
Okay.
For interior?
Interior, yes.
The exterior are?
Exterior are similar in megapixel, but we have a bit of a different option with the pan tilt zoom, the motorized function to cover more space. Essentially, when it comes to the outdoor cameras, we can go with a bigger resolution or a fixed camera or something that's movable that can kind of zoom in mechanically versus digitally, I think is the way it's explained.
So the question I had was, what does that do to server costs and storage length, storage lifetime?
Well, like I said, we did budget and the servers are greatly increased in storage from what we had previously. But it is something that if we start to, we'll probably have to look at probably the second or third year out of the replacement to see where are our storage. Otherwise, we'll have to start to look at frame rates and getting into configuration of what we're recording, like not taking 30 frames per second, for example, cutting down the amount of data that we're actually, we're saving. But it would impact, it would impact immediately our amount of storage, how long we can save video storage. So it is something we'll have to look at as we move forward with the new cameras.
Does the plan include archiving once we reach the capabilities, the capacity of the service itself? I mean, how far back are we gonna keep the information that we're gathering?
Yeah, I don't know that I feel comfortable really sharing that in public, all those details because it is something that, it is a security piece that we have in place, but a good question that I can share with you.
Alright, thanks. Any other questions?
Yeah, I also wanted to understand whether that additional resolution capability of the cameras is contributing to the quality of the system or is it just providing extra detail that doesn't contribute to the focus of the system?
It's actually provided a good amount of increased quality. We had an incident just after installation where the SROs were able to identify faces of people a little bit further away than they normally would have with the older cameras. Part of the system upgrade was not just to take the bad one down and put a new one up, but we also did swaps to put better cameras in high-traffic areas or high-incident rate areas so that we could put better eyes where we need the most. It was really advantageous of us to work with the security teams, especially at the secondary schools, with the SROs and the security staff at FDR and Havlin, to be able to say, okay, and again, we don't wanna get too specific with where they are, but in this area, we have an increased number of activity incidents. We want a better look here. And within the first week of installation, that came into play where we got a much crisper look. The three megapixels allows for better dimming zoom, which is basically to look down a hallway. These cameras can look through windows, so you can see someone approaching a door rather than just wait for them to come through it. There's a lot of really neat stuff that these cameras can do for us at that higher bandwidth or higher resolution, but the system is tuned for things like throughput and capacity where we're maximizing our storage space. We're not just letting all this big resolution video collect space on our servers.
Okay. And this didn't drive infrastructure improvements? So for example, the network cables that were already in the walls or already run were able to handle the additional bandwidth?
Yes.
Now, we've talked about the buildings and the grounds. Is this inclusive of these upgrades and stuff? Inclusive of the transportation cameras or are they a separate entity?
Separate entity. The ones on the buses?
Yes.
Separate entity.
And have we got a plan in place? Because those cameras have been placed longer than the building's security cameras, right?
Not as part of this project.
No, but I mean, we've had security cameras were placed on the buses before we started doing them in the buildings.
I can't really speak to that. Could we, George, for...
Yeah, they're self-contained. They're not tied into the system at all.
Right. I was just wondering about the replacement cycle, if it exists and what the experience of those cameras have been in terms of life cycle.
George's question.
I don't know if the state litigation for reimbursement covers the mobile bus cameras. We'd have to look into that, but it can be added on as a separate replacement cycle. We could work with George on that, certainly.
Just so everybody knows, George did an upgrade to the cameras in the buses just recently, maybe two years ago, talking recent. Not only is there a camera in the front of the bus, but there's also a camera in the back of the bus. So that's been an upgrade that he's completed.
What I'm hoping is that this upgrade and the information gathered by George and his systems and what's needed and the ones that are gathered by the building people being shared, so I have a consistent pattern and consistent sharing of knowledge of what we're dealing with all the way around the school district.
I'm not sure it's that coordinated yet. I think they're separate entities really, that we can...
Well, it seems a right of point now, we ought to, you know, because they're out shopping for cameras and they're determining the values. And I hate to see two separate groups going through the same pathways and making decisions, especially... Well, I guess you're saying that they're standalone cameras, so anytime there's an incident on the bus, we remove the story from the camera.
So my knowledge, that's, I think, how it works. Exactly. It's not tied into the system.
It's not tied into the system. So the other question I had was, the security systems we have in the buildings, can they be monitored from other places besides the main building they're in?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
You gave us three different scenarios in terms of a replacement cycle. Do you have a recommendation there?
I mean, I think Forrest agrees. We'd like to shoot for the four-year. Obviously, in year one, because we've done a bunch of them this year with the project, we can do the five-year. Now, the board gave us authorization to put the $35,000 budget that we're in for next year's cameras. As we build the following year's budget, during next school year, we'd like to possibly increase that. As we get the reimbursement back, we'd like to push it to the four-year cycle. I think as we experience failures at the fifth year, we'd like to get ahead of that by doing them every four years.
Yeah, preemptively change the cameras out.
Correct. And because of the volume of cameras we have, there's gonna be some that are dragging. It's gonna take a while to catch that wave. So if we start at the five-year, some of them are gonna take seven, eight years to get to. We'd like to go for the four at a net cost of $13,000. We budget for the 48. As we get the 35 back, we'd roll it right in and we'd only have to increase the budget, that net 13 number.
Okay. Is there a warranty period on these cameras?
Do you know what I'm hearing?
I believe it's a standard one-year for the cameras, but I'd have to look into it deeper.
I don't need any more detail. Just curious. Okay, thank you.
Move on to the next presentation, which is the visual presentation at board meetings.
That's us too. Stay right here.
Alright. So for us, this is a board goal. Thank you. Yes, please. So the board goal as written is develop and implement a plan to visually present agenda items at board meetings by the end of the 2014-15 school year. So as we looked at this, and Elliot and I have met about this, to look at the design of what this means and to go a little bit deeper into this, you know, here are some considerations that we came up with. You have to be able to display the agenda, support various media, specifically in this room, you know, use of our existing Board of Ed sound system that we spent a lot of money on, and the versatility of it. So it's not just for a board meeting. So our normal projector and laptop that's here on a normal night is used for everything else that happens in this room. It even travels around the district. So that being said, some design elements.
So I mean, everybody came in tight and obviously saw we don't have the big screen up. We have this lovely monitor that we've borrowed to try out. But we were looking at the designs for this room and that's kind of where the collaboration between Forrest and I come in in terms of what can we install, how can we put this and build it into the space so that it functions the way we'd like it to. So we came up with this concept of between one and three flat panel displays. Obviously, we can use the one if we were, I think part of the intent of the board's goal, as we understood, was to simultaneously display agenda and presentation if possible. And so we can add monitors to be able to do that, one on each. We want the board to be able to see it, so we looked at configurations where we would have one monitor maybe in the back of the room and monitors above the board, either one or two for the public so that we're all looking in the same directions throughout the evening. Touchscreen options, this is a touchscreen monitor. And then additional components such as digital splitters, one to two computers to control and associated cabling. So we won't do the example now. We have two computers hooked up and so we may be wondering why that is. Here we go. This is our second computer that's hooked up and if it comes up...
It goes down, does it?
Technical difficulty there. Are we on HPE, Forrest, or?
It should be. It should be fine here.
Tried to have all fancy today. Pay no attention to the man behind the TV. But what Forrest is gonna show you is that as part of the board's goal to present the agenda, there is a module in our board docs. For those that are not aware, we use board docs to share the agenda, both with the board members and the public. There is a module component to the board docs program which allows us to show the progression through the agenda to the public as we move through a meeting. Forrest is gonna put that up right now. There it is. And show you as our district clerk progresses through the agenda. Right now, we're on item 63. And as we continue to go, the highlighted portion progresses down, the agenda scrolls up, and then now it's there. So while we're presenting, we'd be able to flip back and forth between presentation and agenda. So just, we wanted to share with the board the option. If we did one, that's why we said one to three monitors. If we do one monitor, we can do a software swap. This can be minimized and maximized with a mouse. We just did the two different computers to try this.
So we kind of figured, everybody was gonna be looking at the presentation when we're looking at the presentation and then when there was no presentation, you could toggle back to the board agenda. That way with one device, you can do both with one screen.
So and then it would just be strategic placement of the screen. We actually put the screen here because of the consideration for the Board of Ed roadshows. We don't just do our meetings here. We do them all over the district, in every school building. And usually, when we're on location at a school building, we typically put the presentation off to the side of the boards so that the board members and the public have equidistant viewing. So in that case, this would be the viewing angle. So we did move it over a little bit rather than have it where the screen would be generally in this room. But there are special considerations to our other school buildings. Site-specific room configurations. We don't set up at FDR the same way we do at Havlin, the same exact way we do at North Park. There are different rooms of different sizes and different seating capacities. Labor requirements. If we're rolling these things around from room to room within a building, it takes a little bit more. This is not portable in terms of leaving this building. It's really heavy and fragile and we don't wanna put it on a truck. But it can be moved within a building if we weren't gonna attach it to a wall. If, again, as Forrest stated, what we have in this room usually for a setup is used for everything, from planning meetings to admin meetings to trainings. So we want to keep that versatility option with any product we put anywhere in the district. And then the other option is, do we enhance our existing setup? And quite frankly, we can do that input swap on a projector with a laptop as we just did with the monitors and keep the projector setup for the roadshows if we chose to do that, whether that's long or short term. So our preliminary project estimate was a $5,000 to $10,000 budget. Depending on configuration, I know we gave you folks a lot of options tonight, but we did put a decent amount of thought into this. And honestly, you know, one monitor is great, two monitors can work, but we felt that whatever way we go with this, it should be something that benefits the district beyond just the board meeting and still be able to meet the board's goal.
And just two other things to note. This is a loner. We don't own this at this point. So it isn't something that we purchased. It was to give a nice demonstration of what is possible.
I didn't show up with a bow.
I lost my thoughts, so...
Sorry.
Yeah, I lost my thoughts. No, go. So if you've got, oh, and we're really looking, we provided a lot of information. We're looking, you know, please for some feedback on what direction we should take to be able to best guide where our pricing goes or what direction we take to fulfill this board goal for this year.
So I think I'm gonna jump in here early and first because in part, this was my board goal. I think Doug and I have talked about this various times. So I appreciate the work that Forrest and Elliot have done here. Unfortunately, I have been trying to get it on the agenda for our technology subcommittee meetings, but, well, that's not the unfortunate part. The unfortunate part is that we've had the last two canceled due to snow dates. And so we're way behind on higher priority work in that committee, so it hasn't come up there. So I think that these two gentlemen being proactive on working on this board goal, put this together just to give us the ground rules and some information in order to have a discussion.
Yeah, I think it's good that they did. It's pretty impressive and I always, I liked what I saw already.
Yeah. So I've actually talked to these two gentlemen for a couple hours since they published this last Friday. And one of the conclusions that I came to is that I think a very useful exercise in this case would be to either send it back to the technology subcommittee for, you know, when they have time. And I don't think that's gonna be this year, by the way. And I'm suggesting that committee because it's got the technological expertise. It's got representatives from teachers and students and community. Because what we're talking about here is something that's, I see as an improvement for this room as a meeting room in general, not just for Board of Ed.
Right.
And so I can see it as an improvement for training sessions or general meetings. The other thing that I see is that I don't think that we can give these gentlemen any guidance as far as what we want until we see more specific proposals and price tags.
Yeah, the only thing I guess I would ask, it seems not related, but it is, I guess, is that, you know, I know we've moved some stuff around here in the district. You know, for example, a Beavis folks moved over to HPE. What kind of real estate is left in this building? And, you know, in other words, I guess what I'm saying is while this is a very nice meeting room, I'm not so sure it's a great board meeting room because, you know, it's probably fine for a couple of conference tables and a small group or a medium-sized group of people. But when you bring the public in, tonight's not so bad, not a lot of, you know, members of the public here, but it's just, it's a weird setup and it's just because of the layout of the room. There's not a lot you can do, its size, its layout. I just didn't know what, and I thought we had maybe talked about, I don't know, you know, what's in the back of the building as far as maybe a different quote-unquote larger meeting space that would become the board meeting room, but I don't know what's even possible.
Yeah, I think we...
You can tell I haven't wandered around lately in the long-term time for all I know.
Um, I think the last time we talked about it, the... I think the last time we talked about it, the only potential area would be to expand that way. And I think right next to us, on the other side of this wall, in addition to hallway, you go into the break room. And it's really the only usable space in the building. There's no other way without, you know, really large cost to reconstruct this, any area of this to be an improved board meeting space. You have the, basically a shop in the back which wouldn't work.
Yeah, yeah, right.
And, you know, and then a choppy section in the middle with no windows, and I don't think that'll work, and some egress problems. So this is it. I can't remember what we said about chopping this wall out. I don't remember what we said.
When we did the projects, we looked at it using existing space. Because if we start thinking about pushing one wall back, then you push two walls back. And I think we have a lot of options as it is, and we tried to keep it contained to the space we have.
Yeah, I think we landed on, this is the only meeting space that we have. I think we talked about making maybe HPE a permanent meeting space, but I'm not sure that's.
You know, I actually was just thinking about it.
That's not air-conditioned. We came up with that, you know, the summer, so.
Right, this is, right, the summer and the, and the, right, and the shoulder months.
I think we landed that this, like it or not, this is our only meeting space. When we need to go to a larger venue, we certainly have the technology through a laptop and a projector and a pull-down screen to pretty much accomplish anything we want to do at a remote location with the exception of possibly toggling back and forth from the agenda to the presentation. But it sounds like we can do that even with a couple of laptops and the right projector.
See if it works.
Among my, I'm gonna use over complaints with the current system that we normally use in this room is that the presentation screen is behind, back to the board.
Right.
It's less than I feel, certainly. When I stand on that side, I would phrase it as uncomfortable. This is supposed to be a meeting room for, to contain meetings of the Board of Education in public.
Right.
Which means that it really ought to be arranged to maximize the ability of the Board of Ed to adequately communicate with each other. You know, among the, so.
And that, yeah, and the laptop, the Chromebooks have helped with that as well, because now everybody has the same screen.
It certainly has, isn't it?
Yeah.
But one of, again, one of the failures of the current system is that often that leaves people looking at the Chromebook instead of a screen where there could be an interactive conversation going on, you know, where the pages move, where someone's pointing at a specific location. So I would like to.
I'm more inclined to pay attention if I'm looking at the screen on the wall than fill around with this.
Precisely.
Because I'll wander off and look at something else, you know, make you lose interest, you know.
Yeah, or. Or.
We're just being honest.
Or.
Yeah, so then does that, does this device stop that?
Right. I, I, I think it does.
Certainly, I think the location helps.
Right.
You know, among the ideas that I happen to kick around with the two gentlemen with the microphone was perhaps removing the entryway behind and making that an auxiliary door to the outside and having everyone enter the building through the front. And then we could, we could turn, you know, rotate this so that the board.
With the screen there, yeah.
That's right. So that's one of the options we have. Another option that I have mentioned to a few of you is actually placing a screen back there on the wall, a second screen on this wall, therefore, and then mirroring the screen.
Yeah, I like that idea.
And therefore, everybody is facing forward.
Right.
The, you know, the people who are here to watch the community, who's here to watch us, would still be looking at us, could see our reactions and so forth. I think that's a better situation overall.
That's kind of not the direction I think I would go, you know, it's just, you know.
Yeah. So. So I, and we're not gonna solve it here now, so I think we really do need to have.
It doesn't matter whether it's a nice fancy screen like this or a projector.
I'm not sure that the subcommittee is, really has the expertise.
Okay.
You know, and I think it really, you know, it's just, I think it's double work for Forrest to talk to a committee that don't have the access to, you know, previewing these things. I think we can keep it at the board level, since it's a board goal, and really what we want to talk about is what kind of device we need. So whether he does it and brings it to the tech committee, he's gonna have to bring it to the board anyway. I don't know that the tech committee signed on to have input into this board goal as much as to the tech plan. So, and knowing that the tech committee now has this enormous task of making sure we get our tech plan in by September, June thirtieth? Twelfth. I'm not sure this resides in the tech committee.
I only think about it in those terms because this room is only used for board meetings twice a month if we're lucky. So the rest of the.
Oh, no, it's used all the time.
No, for.
For board meetings twice a month.
It's for board meetings, yes, 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 separate.
Exactly my point, and that is, it's a meeting room the rest of the time.
Right.
And therefore, it seems like we should have input from the rest of the users of the room in terms of what would be the most useful.
Well, I guess that's the question you're asking, around the screen there, you're about a screen there with double image, and can this room be configured when it's in its normal conference room setup? Will that, will that work then?
And I'm not sure, you know, I don't, I think the tech committee members signed up to work on a tech plan, not on.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
With the footprint of the room, I like that idea about maybe eliminating that.
So.
Maybe Charlie could come up with footprints, show us a little layout.
We did discuss it, as Mr. Mr. Meyer suggested, we talked about it briefly. The biggest concern with why we don't have this meeting anywhere else and why we keep it in this room is capacity and egress. I think the superintendent hit on that directly. We would want to keep this as an egress door, but we could, we have the option to either make it an emergency exit or even possibly, and I don't know the status of whether or not this is load-bearing on this corner, but if we could eliminate the vestibule, turning the board this way would not be much of a challenge. And then we could put one of the screens behind the board and one on the back wall in the same.
That may look like a small space, but that would do wonders for this room squared at all.
Well, yeah, I mean, probably just the table where you four gentlemen are would come right into this corner. And we'd be able to mount a monitor between windows behind the board and one on the back wall, and it would be large enough that everybody could see it in both directions. It's the same concept as this way, but stretch the room out for audience. And then part of the reason why we cleared out the space is to show how much empty space is in this room, given this configuration without the projector screen. So we figured, based on footprint, we could fit another fifteen to twenty people there, and if you spin the room around, you still have that audience capacity.
The other question here is budget. I don't necessarily, no, I'm not interested in spending money that's only going to have an impact on the quality of the Board of Ed meetings. If we improve the technology in this room, I think it's gonna have an impact on Board of Ed as well as every other meeting that's conducted here.
Oh, I agree, there's a lot of meetings that go on here, you know, that's, you know, let's not lose sight of that.
So because of that, I think that even a sum as large as thirty-five or forty thousand dollars an improvement over a couple of years would be well worth the investment in technology. I'm throwing those numbers out because by the time you do cabling, you put two screens up, a couple of computers to drive it, additional equipment, forty thousand dollars isn't hard to achieve. So I just want a level set that I think it's possible that five or ten thousand dollars is a low number. I don't want to disagree with the gentleman at the microphone.
You could put ceiling speakers in to get rid of, it takes up space.
There's a lot you could do, right.
Use the same PA to feed it, use those speakers for the roadshow and get the heck out of this room, because they take up a lot of space.
Yeah.
So, and the other, the other issue that contributes to the quality of our Board of Ed meetings is the fact that we are, when we are at a roadshow, we lose access to any improvements we make in this room. And that's a different issue, and I have a strong opinion there. Therefore, I don't want to go into it now. But I just wanted to mention that that's also an aspect of this conversation. So I think that the way we move forward from here, without spending any more time in public, is perhaps if we could arrange for, I'm thinking, two special meetings with Forrest and Elliot and two or three board members, to come up with some solid proposals, talking about reconfiguring rooms and the technology associated with it. Try to get some numbers associated with those, and bring it back to the board sometime in June.
Sounds good.
So.
We can do that.
Okay.
Any other comments before we yea and ay on that proposal? All right, just a quick straw poll, would that completion of our goals be suitable to everybody? Would they, a group to look at the other modifications that might make it better, including possibly revising this room and coming back with a presentation in June to complete our goals?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
I'm gonna stick with the board subcommittee members, the tech committee members, you, Doug, Steve, Dan, Doug, Steve.
Here.
Could I impose upon.
They can explain it to me. Anybody can understand it.
Could I impose upon you a request to organize two meetings?
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Oh, there is, you gotta attend.
That's fine.
Well, that's a good start.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll borrow that in the meantime. I don't know what I do with that.
You said it was a touchscreen?
It was a touchscreen.
I wonder if I'd had it when the NCHD lay game involving Villanobos on, I could have changed the outcome.
It's a touchscreen, and how hard is that screen? Does it react when you touch the screen?
It's a USB connection, but yeah, it does.
I would guess from the topic that Wayne's on next.
No, that would be me.
Oh, no, sorry, yes, it's Cora.
Program component. You not only get to present it, you get to turn it to bounce? God bless you.
I'll do my best. Good evening, everyone. My task for tonight is to share the program component of the budget for next year. And I have to share that it's an easier, happier challenge than it's been some years. There have been years in recent history when I've needed to stand here and talk about numerous cuts and impacts on staff and students, and it's a pleasure not to be facing as much of that this year. So in front of you, you have a summary of the increases over the last few years. And I'll just note that this year's increase is the smallest that it's been in the last three years. This is the overall employee benefit changes. And certainly, when you think about the program budget as being the largest component of the district budget, and then think about the associated costs with staffing and health insurance and benefits, you can see that those are where our largest increases come from, health insurance itself and our payroll taxes. So the actual changes here include both those that represent an increase to the budget, but also those that are programmatic changes without necessarily accompanying the increase to the budget. And I will go through most of these in some detail, and you can either stop me along the way or pose questions at the end. I think people are aware that we contracted this year with Core BTS to increase our staffing in the technology department. The person associated with that contract is to my left. And there is an increase to that contract for next year. So that's a continuing effort to support the needs that we have in the technology department. You've heard me present a couple of times on our new engineering program at FDR, Project Lead the Way. We are very excited to start the first class next year. And the increase there, or the cost associated with the contract itself, is not an increase to the overall budget. It's an increase to my contractual budget for the requirements that go along with that program, but that money is coming from an existing code. So that is not an increase to the budget itself. There are a couple of things associated with the pupil services department. One of them is a legal consortium, and that's basically a membership that provides a lot of professional development, updated legal information, and things that allow our department to stay very current and prepared to deal with all that goes with special education. I'm going to jump down and just stay with that department for a minute and speak to equipment needs. There is an increase there, and as you know, all of our equipment needs that are generated on IEPs are our legal responsibility in addition to our responsibility to our students. So there is an increase there. In the past, while we've had a responsibility and obligation to provide safety training, we've not always had a distinct line for it. It has come out of Aviva's budget or from another source, but we felt that we really needed to take a look at more specific budgeting for that, and that has resulted in an increase in that line. And that includes a couple of things. It includes training associated with the safe committee. It includes training for our staff that are associated with the eight-one-two programs that support our students with social, emotional, and behavioral needs. And so that does represent an increase there. And then finally, for the pupil services department, we are recommending an increase of a part-time secretary. You may recall that in this year's school budget, we made a shift from working with a COSER, shared service with BOSIS for the purpose of Medicaid billing, Medicaid billing, and brought that in-house. And that has gone beautifully. I think Aviva would concur. Her staff has really done an outstanding job with that work. However, in addition to that, in addition to our attempt to look at the way we do registration, there is a need to provide additional staffing. And the sense, and Aviva can correct me if I'm wrong, is that the addition of that, along with the savings from the COSER, both in terms of efficiency and costs recuperated to the district as a result of the Medicaid, really makes us a very appropriate addition. I just give you the opportunity if you want to add to that.
Work, yeah. I'll say the COSER, at least last year, was a twenty-eight thousand dollar COSER. Joan Powers in my office has been doing the Medicaid billing, so we're up to date, but there's always a lot more that you can take the time to bill for that we would be reimbursed for. And then the registration piece you were talking about is that we really have been wanting to do central registration for some time, and this would allow us to do that from our office. And, you know, align not only students with disabilities who are registering in the district for the first time, make sure their place more quickly, but also we do all of the residency and homeless student work and ESL, and all those decisions are made at my office. So I think it'll be easier for parents to come in and sort of have all their needs met and be all set.
And the consistency of our records also has the potential to not only have accurate reporting, but other savings embedded as well by having accurate, consistent recording systems.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Olivia. Let's see, coming back. Sanctuary training is something that was introduced to us about a year and a half ago for the first time. And it's an outstanding program. I've had some familiarity with it in other districts and in private settings. And it's really focused on the way both students and adults work through trauma. And it is really around a way of behaving and operating as a team of adults who are caring for students. It provides intensive training for how we support our media students, and not necessarily suggesting that those are our students in special education placements, but we have students all over the district who have experienced significant trauma in their lives, whose families are still experiencing trauma. So the work of Sanctuary is really around coming together as a community of professionals and identifying all the ways in which our work as a team and our work with staff and students and families can be strengthened with a really strong focus on trauma treatment, understanding the origins of trauma and the impact of it. That conversation was accentuated a little bit when we had our focus review from the state education department. It was noted that we had done a fair amount of training for some of our staff, our social workers, our guidance counselors, our school psychologists. But it was indicated as a need, particularly at the high school, for more broad-based training and support to staff so that we could increase and improve our capacity to support all students. So while the original conversation came prior to the focus reviews, there was reference to that type of support in the recommendations that we received. And I think, oh. And I think, oh, in the administrative budget that was presented last board meeting, you saw a reference to the increase in the secretarial support in in half of my world, the human resources department. And then to go on, as you saw in the previous two presentations, the work of the technology department has grown and grown and grown. And I'm not sure that everyone is aware, but right now, the technology department does not have its own clerical support. Forrest and his department share Josephine Corino, who is in my office. And there are a couple of reasons to think about a change there. One is that with the increased demands of the technology department on both the instructional side and the infrastructure, non-instructional side, they they just need more help. There is a tremendous amount of work to be done there. And while the support that's been provided has been wonderful, it really is not adequate at this time. The other impact on the capacity of the two departments to share a secretary is the increase in responsibilities in my office around testing. You've seen in my journals and and you've heard as we've talked about our A P P R system that with local assessments and the responsibility around those, all three secretaries in my office have, over the last three years, needed to do an incredible amount of overtime in order to accomplish all of the tasks associated with that. So after a lot of conversation, it was really just determined that it's time. It's time for the technology department to have clerical support that is completely dedicated to those needs. We had this year, a group of teachers at the middle school provide an after-school creative writing program for students. And while this year it was provided on a voluntary basis, we've talked about that. We've talked about that with the union and are recommending that the co-curricular budget be increased so that that activity can be offered as any other co-curricular activity would be with an appropriate stipend. So that's an addition. There's a regulation in the hall that requires an increase in athletics, excuse me, for the girls varsity lacrosse coach. And then on a very happy note, I I know the board spoke about this a couple of times and and made a recent decision to respond to the changes in recognition for our cheerleading coaches and to change that from a club to a team. And so the increase here is in response to that much muted recognition for our cheer advisors. Last year, again, with the support of the board, in the final hours of the school year, we were able to add a summer school program for F D R. And while all of the salaries and and stipends associated with that were already in the budget for this year, we did not yet have the transportation information. So this represents the addition of the transportation that we felt was necessary for summer school for F D R in order to provide that on an equitable basis and make sure that all of our students who need and want to come to summer school have the opportunity to do so. So in terms of the personnel changes, the additions that we're recommending are the return of the dean of students at F D R, and I know that Dr. Reichich will elaborate on that in just a moment. You did hear of that at the last board meeting. The technology secretary and Medicaid secretary that I just mentioned. The only reductions that we're anticipating are two elementary teachers. Both of those are, as they have been in the last several years, based strictly on reduced enrollment and the need for fewer sections. I will say that that number of two, at this point, is a little bit tentative. We have a couple of spots where enrollment has has changed almost weekly. And in some cases, a a move in or a move out of just three or four students at a grade level can make a difference. So I just want to reiterate that that two is not definite. We track enrollment and provide the board with those reports on a monthly basis, but between now and the end of the school year, we'll be watching it much more closely. The other unknown, as you're familiar with, each year at this time, is kindergarten registrations. Registration has occurred, but those continue to come in over the summer as well, and and that can also influence our decision. So I want to turn it back over to Greer, who wants to speak about the dean.
Cora, before we leave that the the lead screen.
Sure.
You have the you have the technology secretary and a half Medicaid secretary, but what about that two tenths increase that you also mentioned? Where did the
That's not an increase of a person. It it's an existing position that would be moving from ten months to twelve months.
All right, so it's not bringing in a a tenth for the summer, it's expanding the
That's right.
requirements of that position to a full-year position?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, just to touch on the dean of students position. Last year, we reluctantly eliminated the dean of students based on, you know, really just looking at tight finances. We did say that we would monitor this position very closely to see that if at the end of the day, our recommendation would be to bring the dean of students back to F D R. And at this time, we are recommending that we do bring the dean back. We looked at also last year, part of the rationale is some of the declining enrollment. We are down. We looked at historical numbers of when we added in the the initial ten-month A P, how many students were here when we added the ten-month A P at F D R, which was, you know, five or six years ago. And then now we've had declining enrollment. But just to, one of one of the concerns that we all had with eliminating the dean was can we manage to maintain all of the new programs that we have at F D R without this position? And that was what we were going to monitor closely. So we gave it a shot and realized that, no, it cannot be done with three administrators at F D R. Just in the last two years alone, the evaluation teacher, the the evaluation system for teachers has increased exponentially. We've added Avid, Gradpoint, Naviance, some of the measures of academic progress. Common Core learning standards are new. We now have a new summer school. Data teams are new. Some of the things of Project Lead the Way, we've also increased the number of students that we keep at F D R in our eight one two program, educating them in school. So the list of what we've added far exceeds any enrollment numbers. Some of the particular programs that were raised as concerns is what's going to happen to our positive behavior intervention system, freshman networks. Couple of the others, I was looking for one in particular, anyway. So a couple of things, yeah, we were not able to maintain the P B I S freshman networks without that extra pair of hands. Some of the good programs that have been introduced were going by the wayside. We also are and continue to be a focus school at F D R. And so while we have a declining enrollment at F D R, the work that we've increased, whether it's unfunded mandates or just programs that we know work for kids and help put in support systems, has grown exponentially. So I I also took the numbers and went a little further and said, okay, well, we we tried, we tried without the dean of students, and we looked at numbers, and we realized that the loss of students that we had didn't result in less administrative work. But at what point might we say we have declined enough? And I took the current enrollments, and if you look at our K through three class right now, kindergarten through third grade, if we stayed the same with the number of students we have, which chances are we will continue to decrease. But if we stayed exactly the same and didn't decrease at all, when that K through three cohort becomes the nine through twelve cohort, the the high school will be down another three hundred and eighty-four students. And I think when we get to those numbers, we can again look at reducing the administrative team. But right now, the incremental loss from twelve hundred, from thirteen hundred to twelve ninety-two to twelve fifty-six, the the decrease in enrollment and the increase in whether there are mandates, new standards, or the things that we're bringing in that we know are going to make students competitive, well-rounded, and well-adjusted, because a lot of these are character ed or support systems. We just, we we gave it a try to save some money. We said we would monitor it, and we did, and it is our recommendation that, not a good idea, that that for, in all fairness to all our students at F D R, they need the support. And the administrative team, too.
Before I move to the next slide, I would just also want to point out that our hope would be that if there are two reductions in the elementary sections, that both of those would be taken care of through either retirement or attrition. So again, that's tentative, but I'd be remiss if I didn't make that note. So this is the summary of all the components of the budget, the admin, the program, the capital, and the percentage that each represents in the budget for each of the last three years. And if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to entertain them or refer them to my colleagues who know better.
Questions. You said F D R is a focus school. What additional work is added on the principal? And if we became came off the list as a focus school, how much reduction of work happens to the principals?
That's an excellent question. The the work associated with being a focus school involves state intervention of a magnitude that causes an enormous amount, and and I gotta, you know, give Cora her due here, but because she certainly assists. But every year, you have to have an evaluation, an outside evaluation that is labor-intensive in that you have to put together a comprehensive plan. You have to have a review. This year, we're doing a self-review, so there's a team at F D R that has to give up time out of the office to go through a document that's about sixty to seventy pages long minimally and answer all the questions, prove how we're addressing it, provide all the documentation. So every other year, you either do a self-review or you prepare for the state ed review. The review is just one component. When they come, first of all, we, part of the review is that you put a plan in place. And the plan has to say you're going to do more than we were doing before to address our improvement initiatives. So every improvement initiative that we identify in the plan has to be implemented by the building principals, by the teachers, by the staff. It all has to be monitored. It has to be measured. It has to be documented. So there's the plan and the implementation of the plan. There's the review process and the reporting process. So it takes, I don't know if I could quantify, but I would I would easily say that administrative time, if I said it takes a good fifteen days out of their year, I think I'd be on the shy side. That might be just in terms of meetings and getting the documents and things like that, but it's enormous effort that goes into the review process. So what would go away if we weren't on the review team was the second half of that? Well, the only way you get off of as a, is to improve your performance of the students that are identified. So all of the work identified in the plan to get you off the list would have to continue. Otherwise, you'd wind up back on the list. What would go away would be the entire review and evaluation process by the outside state education agency.
The other question is on on summer school. We handle our principals in-house then, of all the principals we have. We don't, we don't hire an additional principal for summer school?
We do a stipend for the summer school principal, and it does not necessarily have to go to somebody in-house. They would have to apply. For example, at the elementary level, we open it up to our principals, but we actually have somebody, they don't apply because they have their own work to do, and somebody from the outside applies. So we don't know when we post for the summer school principal if we'll have an in-house person, because they still have to do all the work that they do anyway, and then they do this on top of it.
So hiring a dean of students really isn't going to change that?
The dean of students is ten months.
Right, but you used that as summer school as one of the reasons for the dean of students. I'm not saying I didn't think that really affected.
Not the dean of students, but in order to set up a summer school, it's a lot of administrative work before the kids leave. So someone has to identify all the students for summer school, notify them, set up a transportation schedule, set up the class schedule. So so while the the principal that you hire actually comes in and does the onsite work, so much has to be done i- i- in June.
I forget it.
Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you, Cora.
You're welcome.
And we have a last presentation, the energy conservation update.
And this is Jill Parisella.
Hi, Denise. Before I start, just a couple of things. We'll make it quick. I'd like to introduce Del Warren, sitting back there. He's a division vice president of marketing with Synergistic. And he's here on a visit, and he's here for support and any fun. So, uh, the other thing was, I don't know if I can move this. This is our new posters for the energy program. We had them made, and we branded our energy program. So we now have a logo that's attributed to the program that goes on all our communications and emails. And so when everybody sees it, they'll associate it with the energy program for the district. It's geared towards the tech era with kids and faculty, and it links right to our website. So anybody that's passing by with a phone can scan it and go right to our website for more information. These are rolling out to our schools now, in the high school, in the middle school, and are on their way to the elementary schools. So I just want to share that with the board tonight. Um, and then oh, okay. So this is our mid-year update, now that we have six months of data in our second year. So from August through January, our program savings, a hundred thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars, and that's about a twenty-five percent savings over what would have been spent without an energy program. So it's, this is a good number. And I just want to clarify that these are gross program savings numbers. At the end of the year, when I do that end-of-the-year recap, is where we provided the net numbers with the program expenses. And the reason that we do that then and not now is that the expenses for the program are all front-loaded at the beginning of the year, and the cost avoidances for the program are month-to-month, so they don't line up with the expenses. So to provide net numbers without all of the month-to-month savings is misleading, and it's not completely accurate. So we wait till the end-of-year recap to do that. This is a side-by-side of the first year and the first half of the second year. So you can see that the expected cost of energy is the first number, and that's what would have been spent had we not been implementing the energy program in the district. The second number is the actual cost of energy use. So you can see that we've actually spent less so far in the first six months. It's it's less than fifty percent of the actual cost of last year. So and part of that has to do with the the huge, the drastic lowering of the cost of oil. So that's part of that. No special savings yet this year. No special savings yet this year. And then, the program savings so far is a hundred thirty-seven thousand, two hundred sixteen dollars. Last year, the total program savings for the whole year was a hundred ninety thousand, five hundred forty-seven dollars. So you can see that we're doing really well, just six months in this year. I included this graph just as a refresher on the, the way that savings is calculated, because it's good illustration. And I won't, you know, completely nerd out on you guys, and then explain the linear regression and how the weather is adjusted for and everything.
Close your ears, Steve. Feel warm.
But, but I, I mean, because I could go on and on. But this is a basic illustration, and it, and it kind of helps to, to remind everyone that the way that savings is calculated is that we take the, the column all the way on the right, the actual baseline is what was spent on energy before a program. That number, and that's use. These numbers are use, what we've used for energy, not necessarily the cost. That actual baseline is taken and adjusted for, with those mathematical equations, for today's weather conditions and today's prices, so that we can, we have an idea of this is what we're supposed to spend, or supposed to use, rather. And then, the orange column is our actual use, what we've used so far this year. The difference between that, that tall adjusted blue column and the orange column is that lime green column, and that's what we've avoided having to use. That number is then, we then, you know, attribute our cost now to that number, and that's our cost savings. So that's just an explanation on how the savings is generated in a very basic way. This graph is a good visual of where we are. The, the first set of columns is our year one, and the column all the way on the left, the grayish one, is the guaranteed savings. Guaranteed savings meaning this is what Synergistic says with cost of the program, that, that the program, all savings of the program should cover all the expenses of the program and then some. So that number is the expenses of the program. It's guaranteed that that would be paid for out of the savings of the program. So that's the guaranteed savings. The middle column in year one was our actual program savings. And then, that's the seventy-one thousand. The little column was where we were at six months in year one. So you can see in year two, you can compare them. The middle column in year two, though, is not our actual savings because we're not there yet. We're not finished with year two. It's a projected savings. It's where we should be at the end of the year according to Synergistic. And the hundred sixty-four thousand is the guaranteed savings. So we, I mean, we're six months in, we're a hundred thirty-seven thousand in savings. So compared to where we were last year at six months, you can see that we're doing really well in year two, and we're on track. So just so you can have an apples-to-apples comparison of six months in each year. This is just to reiterate that the things that drive the program are the, most importantly, are the audits, being in the buildings all the time, and making sure that things are the way they're supposed to be, and often they're supposed to be off, and working the way they should, teamwork with all the departments, and driving, drilling down into the data and finding out where the problems are, where the anomalies are. And the benefits are, you know, obviously budget benefits, environmental benefits, and the fact that the savings drives the program. This is a good, a way to relate the energy savings to real-life things. So our energy reduction is a big number in total energy units, but it's equivalent to, you know, reducing our carbon dioxide by a hundred metricons and planting a hundred sixty-seven tree seedlings and having them grow for ten years. So it's saving that much energy, and twenty thousand, more than twenty thousand passenger cars not driven for a year. That's the amount of energy that we've avoided having to use by, by running the program. This is kind of important because these are benefits that aren't always realized because of the program. Not only are we reducing our use of energy, you know, by changing our schedules and being more aware of how we use our spaces, but the program benefits the district in, in other savings ways, too. There's, through the audits, there's, there's all different ways of saving that's identified. It's not just if things are on when they're not supposed to be, but it's what can we do different? And what can we fix? And what's not working the way it should be working? And a lot of those are addressing concerns that people have, and complaints that they have about the comfort of their space or the indoor air quality of their space. And that means that something's not working the way it should. And the comfort and safety of occupants in the buildings when they're supposed to be there is the number-one priority of the program. So we've been able to identify a lot of issues in those areas. And collaboration with facilities in prioritization of projects, what needs to be done the most, and being able to provide a cost-benefit analysis to work that needs to be done. If, you know, comparing how much energy we're using per square foot and building to building, if we know that, you know, we should only be using this much energy, but we're using this much energy, and we can repair it or change it with this much money, what's the payback on that? And is it, is there a quick payback? Can we pay for it by, you know, fixing it and then not having to waste that much energy? So there's ways to, to plan and go about repairing things that can pay for themselves in a very short-term way if they're done properly and planned properly. So there's lots of benefits that the program has that maybe a lot of people don't realize. And then, just thanks to everybody for being part of the program. And it takes every single person in the buildings to get on board and do this. And I've really seen that, especially this year, I've really seen that change in attitude and behavior and awareness come about at the high school, the biggest school in the district. It's just, it's really changed over a lot. And it's nice to walk into the buildings and see things the way, you know, the way they should be. And, and it's so different from the first year. So it's really come a long way. I'm really excited about where it's going. The, the number on the top is our total program savings to date. Again, a gross savings number of the program, but that's the last eighteen months of the program. So that's where we're, we're at to date, meaning through January.
Any questions?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to commend you on this work. When we made the decision to go with Synergistic on this, it felt like a risk. It felt like a leap of faith, and the numbers you're showing us now really seem to bear out the, the success of, of the program. Thank you.
Just want to make a comment as the overseer of the program, or one of the, one of the overseers. I meet with Jill on a regular basis. The amount of stuff that she teaches me about energy and the savings that she's making, and I should add the reaching out to the community. She really has moved towards that. And I look forward to some of the things she's going to do this, this spring, and, you know, bringing what the company used to be called Energy Education. So I'm really excited, and I want to thank Jill for a fantastic job and, you know, really communicating well with me and facilities and operations. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
Thanks. Thanks, Gary and Perry, for sitting on the energy committee.
May I have a motion and a public participation?
Uh-huh.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor? I would ask that anybody that speaks, there should be a sheet up there to sign your name as you're speaking. And generally, we look to keep the meeting, the comments to about three minutes, so we keep the meeting moving along. If anybody would like to speak at this time?
Hi, Rob, I'm Pete Quick Park. I just had a quick question. With the state testing approaching, I was wondering what the plan was for the children who refuse. Last year, originally, it was going to be a sit-and-stand plan, but then the children were allowed to read quietly instead. I was just wondering how it was going to work this year. Thank you.
Anyone else? May I have a, a motion, a public participation?
Uh-huh.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor? Anybody like to offer an answer to the question?
Yeah.
Hi, Rob. Yes, the students will be provided to read. If they're not taking the state assessments, depending on the developmental age, they'll either stay right in their classroom, but their peers are being removed. And we're flexible based on numbers and how that all plays out. But yes, they will be able to read.
Anyone else to comment? All right, for our public participation. This moves us along to board discussions. First item on the board discussion is naming of the athletic facility. What was specifically, there's been a suggestion that the athletic complex that we opened up last year follow and adopt the name, or the board approves the use of the name of the Oval Office, which was the key, a key reference to the facility that was used during the first year, particularly the openings, the opening events that we had there.
Yeah, I'd like to, I guess, anyway, I had kind of brought this up with Coach Brian Holland, right? I could come up with the idea, and it's just, it's too clever and too, you know, to not kind of memorialize permanently, I think. It just fits the presidents and the shape. And I mean, it's, it's just like I said, it was just, it was, it was really too clever. I just couldn't, you know, I was like, why didn't I think of that? You know, I thought it was really cool. But then I got thinking, you know, you, you know, when facilities, you know, when a board of edu, or a school district, I should say, you know, you know, starts naming things, you know, it has to be done, you know, I think, you know, what should be done. You know, certainly, schools get officially named by the Board of Education by resolution. And I wanted to, to think that we ought to do this because I think it will get, I don't want it getting lost to history or then have somebody else say, oh, don't call it that, or whatever. I, I think, you know, we have an incredible pride in that facility, and it's just, it just seems to fit. It's who we are, you know, being the home of the presidents. I mean, what, what better way to, you know? So the intent was, what I thought of it, I didn't really, and maybe, maybe Coach Holland had something different in mind. Maybe he was thinking that was the track. I just kind of thought the entire facility, the stadium, which includes the track, and it includes the field, you know, is the Oval Office, you know? And, you know, down the road, you want to talk about, you know, hanging a name on the field or honoring somebody, that's entirely different. But as far as the, the facility itself, you know, it's a safe bet. It's not controversial. It's, you know, you know, so anyway, that was kind of my thought process behind it.
And how would we memorialize that in terms of physical memorial, I mean, we, we can, we can, we can...
Make a resolution, and then everybody knows that's the official name. And if they want to make a sign, or, you know, whatever, you make a sign, and, and everybody knows that, yep, it's, it's, hey, it's definitely okay to call it that, and, and it shall be referred to that, you know? So I, you know, it doesn't have to be done tonight. It's just, but I think we need to get a resolution on it. The community really, can imagine it'd be huge objections, but, you know, they certainly have a chance to comment on it. If they've, you know, got an even more clever name, I'd like to hear it. I don't think you're going to find one, so.
So anybody's got a more clever name can stop in at the next couple of board meetings and raise the issue. And I think it would be nice if we put a bronze plaque or something up at the engines to identify that welcome to the Oval Office.
The home of the presidents. Exactly. Yep.
And we might have to, you know, kind of use the whole term, you know, we'll check into copyright, but, you know, if we called it Oval Office, Home of the Presidents officially, then I don't think we'll infringe on copyright, but we'll just double check.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, if you make it part of a big sentence, you can say almost anything.
Right, right.
Doug had been doing his homework, and he surprised me a little while ago to inform me that a high school or a school complex out in the Midwest had been referring, had created a logo for the entire school district and included the Olympic rings.
Oh, jeez.
And guess what?
Yeah.
The Olympic committee has sued and required them to either pay a copyright or to remove that portion of the logo from all of their items, which, I mean, I thought they would be honored if the school thought the, the concepts and values of the Olympic program was something that should be emulated at the high school or the school district. But it's a different world we live in.
So anyway, I guess nothing more else to be on the side of any comment, nothing really more to say about it. Maybe we should just draft a resolution, you know, for the next agenda, and that way people can comment on it, and, you know?
Can you provide one, please?
If you want, I can write something up, I guess. So, or something.
Yeah, I think, I think we can do that. We'll check the copy. Yeah, we'll, we'll, uh...
Therefore, be resolved.
Yeah, right. Well, we'll figure it out. Yeah.
All right, next item on the discussion is we have been given a copy of the draft school calendar for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year, and I'm sure people will be looking very closely at it as we deal with how, how we're going to deal with snow days. And moving the district south by six hundred miles is not a solution, although it's something I would like to do for three months of the year based on my experience with trying to negotiate ice with two canes this year. I tried one solution where I was running out the door. I had strapped a pillow to my backside as I was walking around, but she said no. All right, hope we got a way of presenting that on the screen, or is this going to show it at the, that's just the I D R? Do we have any comments on what we've seen, fellas?
On the calendar?
On the calendar, yeah.
Yeah, the thing I think I noticed was, and just, it's a, it's a, a technical or edit, is that, you know, the gray days are no school, right? So I just noticed on January first, you want to gray out first. But other than that, I mean, it does indicate, it's on the list that it's winter recess, but yeah. Other than that, I mean, I think, you know, just take a look here. I think I'm sorry. Oh, also, that's right, we opened school. It's on the night, okay? Every day is as late as it can be, I think. That was it, yeah, okay. Yeah, that was all the comments I had.
Yeah, we just turned the first comment.
I'm just mumbling away or something.
I just had one thing that I wanted to bring up and may, wanted to make sure I brought up in public. After the board adopts the calendar, we look at the employee schedule for the twelve-month employees. And there aren't that many twelve-month employees. And one of the things that we've been kicking around in addition to, or in conjunction with all of our energy savings, Jill, perk up for this one. But thinking of the concept of during the winter break, we have every building open with basically two people in it, three people if you count the custodian. Now, the community does have a need for our schools. Certainly, our athletic teams have a need for our schools. But we have been talking for the last couple of years about the concept of closing down during winter break, except for one building, the high school. And then having our athletic teams, you know, coordinated and scheduled so that they can have their practices, so everybody has gym time. Maybe if we couldn't accommodate that, you know, maybe spilling over into a second building, part of the building, but we think we could accommodate it with one building. And that would mean that we would just have to say for the twenty people that are here over winter break that they are off that week. I can tell you that this is a group of people that's going to sit at home with their electronics on and continue working whether they're working or not working. So it would mean that some, some of the twelve-month employees would have maybe three less days of work. But I think the savings to the district would be exponential. When I drive around during winter break, and, and a lot of our administrators are taking discretionary days because they have them, we literally are keeping every single building open for the entire break for the twenty people who work, and it's about two or three people in a building. So that would affect the calendar for the twelve-month employees, but... Um, so that would affect the calendar for the twelve month employees by, I think, about three days over that one week. Um, but I just wanted to throw it out there, um, it doesn't have to be decided tonight in tonight's calendar. Um, it would have to be, uh, something that we all agreed upon, um, but I throw it out there from a productivity, uh, and, uh, an energy saving, uh, save the planet, you know, you name it, um, it just, it really boggles my mind when I drive around and see seven or eight buildings open for business when, um, those of us who work twelve months a year, you get your work done, no matter when you get it done, um, whether you're in the building or not in the building, your deadlines do not change, um, it's a small number of people affected. Um, we try to do some iterations of trying to modify the heating schedule, um, and, you know, what, what really wound up happening is having three people in a cold building. So, I'm just throwing it out there.
Except when you're hosting a basketball con- game or something like that, you have three hundred people in them cold.
Yeah.
Hey, are you, are you talking about administrators and their support staff?
Yes, and, and any custodian that would work out there.
Well, I actually think, I don't know if Elliot agrees with this, that's kind of a, a refresh the building week mid-year where custodians and maintenance can come in and do their thing without the interference of, of all there. And have them, you'd almost have to have them take vacation time or contract, right?
There's two ways, yeah, well, there's two ways to do it. One is to just declare that the district is closed and it doesn't affect their vacation time.
Well, they, they don't have that.
Yeah, nobody's gonna say no to that, um, I thought about the custodial because they do, um, spend some time, you know, uh, during that, but they also have spring break, they have Thanksgiving break, um, we'd almost be better off saying you can come in on a Saturday and, you know, I'm, I'm not sure, you know, I'm not, I know they do use, uh, winter break as a time to get a little bit extra done, but a lot of them take vacation that week anyway, if they haven't taken it during hunting season and Thanksgiving, but, um.
So it's an idea with a few details still to be worked on.
Yeah, just throw it out as a concept.
It's, it's probably one that you couldn't really pick and choose, you have to say.
No, the concept would be to say all buildings are completely shut down, heat set back the entire break except for the high school, yeah.
As far as staffing also.
Yes, well, we would have to rotate, we talked about, sorry Gary, I didn't mean to cut you off, but one of the things we talked about was all the buildings still need to be checked, so we would have to have a certain amount of facilities workers on hand to check, to do building checks, you can't, you know, especially at that time of the year. So we could work out a system where we had the building checks.
We do that now? We, we do that now?
Yeah.
Building check, even on days where everybody's down.
So, yeah, it's something to think about, maybe we'll can pick up this conversation, another time.
Anything to save this money?
I, I, we could ask Jill how much we'd save in that week, maybe you can get us a number.
Oh my gosh, yeah.
Think about it.
Not to change the subject, are, are we?
We're, I'm.
Okay, um, in light of the way, um, snow days have worked out this year, um, I took a, a close look and talked to a few of my friends who also have kids in the district and heard opinions both ways, uh, about how to handle the situation, you know, one, one opinion runs, we should try to build more days into the, the schedule so that we're not cutting into spring break, um, or, or simply plan on having s- school more days and then, um, give back those days if we don't cut into them with snow. Um, it, it's debatable, but one of the, one of the things that I see with this schedule is that there's exactly, uh, one additional day that we can take away or, or add, pardon me, add to the school schedule before we start cutting in spring break. Um, now-
Was it one or two?
Looks like one, that's February sixteenth. Yep, and so in the event that two days go, March twenty-first, which is the first day of spring break, is, is, uh, added to the school year.
I don't have, I don't have it, I don't have it from me.
Yeah.
I don't remember the order in which we did the days.
Well, it's on the schedule, it's right here, it's at the bottom of the page, yeah.
So.
It reads as one day, February sixteenth, two thousand sixteen, if two days, February sixteenth and March twenty-first, two thousand sixteen.
Right, so.
And then it builds from there.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, uh, for example, if that were the case this year, then, um, students would be going to school on Monday. Just to put it in perspective, um. So, I guess one question I have is whether we couldn't adjust the schedule to build in, uh, an additional planned day off that could be, um, repurposed for school, uh, sometime in, uh, uh, February or March timeframe.
Certainly look at it again.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just asking because, uh, given our current circumstances, um, where we had to reclaim several days, um, it seems as likely as not that we would need two days and we'd be cutting into, uh, that full week of spring break next year. I'd like to see us try to avoid that.
You're gonna have a tough time just, just at the point where you look at the calendar too, uh, because if we were, Easter falls, uh, this week, this very week we're in right now would be spring break next year or will be spring break next year.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, feel the weather, you know? Don't wanna say winter's over yet, I mean, officially by the calendar it is, but, you know, you could have a scenario where, you know, you have, you know, you're, you're heading into spring, you've still got more snow days than that, you know, and you might have to, that doesn't really affect what we're here because you won't know it until it already happens, but it, it, it could get tricky, you know, later in the year because you could have a scenario where, you know, I remember April first, no storm nineteen ninety-seven vividly, um, where, um, you know, you could be, you know, going into early April or, or, or the last week of March, which is after spring break, needing s- of, of snow days and then you're, then you're kind of in trouble too, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, there's not to, you know.
We actually had one more day that we looked at, um, and it was a teacher training day and the committee that reviews the calendar is inclusive of the administrative union, the teachers' union, um, uh, administrators, so it's a ho- it's a whole committee, it's a standing committee each year and everybody was in agreement, there was one more day, but we already have Greg Tang booked, a very prominent trainer for math and although that would be a day that, uh, we could recoup before going into spring break, um, everybody agreed that they did not want to lose that training day, um, not only for the expense, just, uh, the availability to get somebody of his caliber there, so I, I was, um, impressed that, um, pretty much everybody in the room in the calendar room wanted to throw their body over that day. Um, with that said, it, when, when, and I know spring, this is a tough one for spring break, families plan, um, and, and both teachers and, uh, families plan, but, um, we can't predict the weather and we do publish every year that, you know, spring break is at your own risk for, um, making those plans, so, um, while we could, we could look for another day, what happens if it's two or three more days or, you know, we're in the same boat, if we have a day after spring break, we're, we're looking at next year's calendar, we could actually have a snow day after that.
Mm-hmm.
And, and you're in a little bit more jeopardy.
Yeah, one question I also have is, uh, what happens if, if we try to skirt, start school a week earlier? September second instead of tonight?
Um, the interpretation is that we have a co- a mutually agreed contract with the teachers that precludes us from starting before Labor Day.
That's what I thought, okay.
So we have-
We did, we did, actually this year we spent a lot more time kicking around the whole snow day issue and one of the things that we did change and I know we got some requests to look at adding more days and, and before, but, um, we looked at it from all possible angles, um, we also included a lot more languages to be, uh, much more clear about what would happen if we use one, two, or three days more.
Yeah, I, I, uh, clearly understand that this is a very challenging issue, I'm not-
No, I know.
Saying that you haven't looked at it already and, but I, I suppose I am asking you if, if you can just look again and see if there's one more day.
Yeah.
If, if nothing else, I think the only thing that's happened for this year is it's convinced me that spring is an illusion.
State of mind, Dan, what state of mind?
I mean, I, I don't know if anybody watches the Weather Channel, I was watching it two days ago when they talked about the fact that as of the twenty-fourth, it was the latest day in a, in a new year that they had not experienced a single tornado. And sure enough, the kiss of death come to twenty-sixth, the internet outbreak and, uh, uh, some devastating and heartbreaking, you know, results of that, so. Mother Nature doesn't seem to wanna relent, as much as we treat her kindly, saving all her trees and cleaning up her atmosphere and saving all that energy, she still continues to beat on us. Alright, so, uh, moving on.
I forgot one other thing, and there is one last safety net in addition to the snow days. We plan a hundred and eighty-two days and so for example, um, if we had two more snow days, if it had snowed today and tomorrow, at that point, we could have determined to say, we're going to still have spring break and we're still within the compliance of a hundred and eighty days. So, we very reluctantly use those two extra days, but as you know, state aid is all tied into attendance, so we still have, right now, two days of buffer between losing state aid and, um, uh, spring break, so, um, I don't know if that helps, but, you know, those are two days that actually right now we still have in books for, uh, that we could potentially use if we got into a bind.
Yeah, it, it's a question of how many, how many meaningful educational days do we have?
Right, exactly.
So, alright, thank you.
I'm moving on to the last board discussion, it's the, uh, conversation that we began a while ago, uh, I think it actually extended from, so what you did cor- uh, career at the high school, we had Student Government Association, uh, analyze the, um, the survey and present the information and finding out what a great job and a different perspective they brought to it that they suggested come forward that the board consider, um, modifying its setup in terms of allowing a student to become a member of the Board, uh, of Education in a sense, um. And we have some, uh, regulations, high school student may serve as an ex officio non-voting member of the school board if the district voters approve having a student in that capacity. And the district could offer that option every two years, so that would be reviewed basically every two years. The senior must be a senior, have attended the high school for at least two years prior to being selected. Uh, the student is not entitled to vote or attend executive sessions, however, he or she is entitled to sit with the board at all public meetings and hearings and participate at such meetings and hearings, so we can hear their immediate, uh, comments on items we were discussing and open and, and get a different perspective here. Um, it also offers five possibilities of how a student would be selected. It could be the elected student president of the high school, a student selected by an election of the student body, a student selected by the high school student government, a student selected by the high school principal or the superintendent, or a student selected by the majority vote of the school board. Those appear to be the five options that are available, um. We're sort of, I, I, based on the conversation we had before and the situation, Debbie's done a good job of reviewing all of our requirements and stuff like that, this does require a resolution which becomes a proposition on the, uh, the, uh, budget vote day, so that would, this would result in a third proposition on the budget vote and to meet the requirements for that, we have to decide whether we wanna move forward and provide that opportunity and there's a resolution currently, uh, available and is also a release for the, uh, the details of the budget vote which includes a proposition referencing the selection of a school stu- a scootin', scoot, yeah, a student on the, uh, on the school board, uh, but that would have to be done today.
Doesn't mean-
So, so at this point, uh, yeah, right now I don't know that we need to, uh, do any more than consider the fact that we can have the, the proposition, the proposition result in a being placed on the election thing and get that vote, e- even though the, the public came back and said that they agreed that that would be a good thing, are we obligated because of that vote to, to implement it this year or that's the only question I had when I was looking at it.
The law is actually silent on that, so I would have to dig very deep to find that.
You know, I, I, I think you just-
I think we've, I think based on the con- the conversations and the reaction we had, I thought the board was supportive about, uh, doing that uh, and, um, I don't wanna put, uh, comments in anybody's, uh, but that's basically what discussions abound about them.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's a good, um, introduction to civics and, uh, you know, quite frankly, uh, although I was in my,
You can't remember how long ago, come on, come on Kevin, come on!
I was probably, yeah, I was probably like, what, twenty-five, twenty-six, I think, when I ran for school board first time, fairly young, you know, tip- than, than more younger than is typical, um, back in the nineties, but really, why did I think about it? Well, because, I'll never forget, my, my best friend was, uh, one of my best friends was the president of the student SGO FDR and I was his treasurer and, uh, there was a lot of nonsense going on, uh, faculty advisors and some bad stuff going on. Really didn't like what the board was up to and he says to me one day and to the rest of the meeting, you know, like, so the student council says, you know, he says, we gotta go there and start going to board meetings and keep an eye on what they're doing. So we started going and we didn't like what we saw and, you know, we spoke of public participation and, uh, well, I think they were kinda like, oh boy, you know, I, but, you know, that's how it starts and, uh, why not?
I hate to admit, I was at several of those meetings when you talked.
Yeah, but, but you weren't, you weren't sitting there though, you were, you were on the best side with us.
No, I was still, I was sitting on- We held hands when we joined the board, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, but, uh, no, but I, I think it's an excellent idea because it gets, it gets people interested, it gets them thinking and, uh, you know, I, I wouldn't object to it at all and I, you know, it's important for the community, we already say, you know, for the people that are scared, no, they can't vote on anything, but why not hear their opinions and, and again, it's the, and it's, it's a permitted by education law and, um, so I, I'm all for it. Because I probably would've been sitting here, I probably would've been that one, you know, so.
I'm al- also for it, uh, one thing, just to step beyond that, once we do the proposition and I'm assuming the public will learn, we have to do a policy on it. You know, board policy and, you know, set the writing up, so. And we, uh, our last policy meeting, Debbie showed us some examples from, from districts, so.
Of how they handle it?
How they handle, yes.
Oh terrific, so we gotta, we gotta template even for that?
Sure.
Terrific. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm really for it, um, especially because I talked to the other board, especially when I went to board training and talked with some there, they were talking about how the students actually gave them insight to some problems that they didn't, weren't aware of and actually gave them creative ways to go about it that they hadn't even really thought of. So, it gives us a, an insight to what the kids are really thinking, so I, to me it's a great thing.
And it creates some interesting pause right after we say, is there any other items the board would like to consider at this time? And we'll, I could see us all just going. I think it's a great idea myself. Alright, so we'll go ahead with that and Debbie will, um, that moment we vote on the resolution will be the one that includes the proposition for these, uh, some-
Before, before we move off of that, maybe I'm jumping ahead here, but, um, you know, and it's not to, uh, not to say anything about my esteemed colleagues on the board who have to run for election, they share with each other, Steve and Perry. Two, yeah, Stephen Perry, um, you know, I just wanna, you know, put that commercial out there, uh, it's great to talk about the point in this, okay, a esteemed board member, but we're really gonna drum up interest in, in, uh, when are the petitions due?
April twenty.
April twentieth, you know, you're not really that far away, you know, so, time to start drumming up interest for, you know, for, uh, those interested in running for the Board of Education because, um, you know, it, it's, uh, you know, next year there's three of us up and, uh, you know, yeah, so, and I'm one of them and I'm, you know, don't know what I'm gonna be doing yet, so I think it's, it's really important that people start thinking about it and, uh, you know, I, I kinda like to joke that that, that we, we struggle getting people to run because quite frankly, we haven't had a lot of competition, or, I'm sorry, controversy lately. Um, you know, and that, that's not a, that's not a good reason not to, you know, get a variety of voices and opinions and, and I can say it because I am one, but, um, you know, we look an awful lot alike up here, you know, there's seven white males, uh, you know, I would not be opposed to a little diversity on this board, so, um, and I think it's important, so I, I really urge people to, to give it some consideration. If not this year, you know, next year will be three seats. But, you know, people got to start thinking about it. Jeff has done a great job and we're really fortunate to have him here. But he got here, if you remember, by a write-in vote because we didn't have enough candidates last year. And this is going to start repeating itself. And it's not a good place to be from a democracy point of view. So, it's a lot of work, but it's rewarding, it's important work. And I just encourage the community, you know, and I'm talking really to the TV as well as the people sitting in the audience, but the people on channel twenty-two who are watching, really give it some thought because I get a little concerned that we're just, we keep going this way and every year it's a panic about, you know, who can run. And quite frankly, again, Jeff, great to have you here, you're a great board member. But the scary part is without adequate candidates running, you know, you can get a rainy lunatic with, you know, enough write-in votes and then all hell breaks loose. And that's not a place we want to be either.
Within their wants.
Yeah, you know, and, you know, well duly elected, but, I mean, you know, the scary thought is that somebody with only a handful of votes could come in and really create a lot of, a lot of problems for the community at large. You know, I think, you know, anybody has the right to run regardless of your opinions, but you should stand up and win the election based on a plurality of votes, not just because you got, you know, penciled in when we're done, again, not to disparage Jeff, that was our, that was our only option last year and I'm glad he stepped forward. He's been a great board member, but we're very fortunate, you know, that we lucked out. Could have been really bad, you know, with any number of other personalities that could have collected one or two more votes, you know, so.
I'll just comment, I get on the board at a time when it was somewhat in turmoil and, you know, it stabilized. So, I didn't know what to expect. I can assure you that the gray hair, the wrinkles on my face and the canes that I walk with at the present time while trying to recover from my back surgery are results of genetic issues associated with me not being at behind this, the magnum upon us sitting at this table. The time I've spent here has been rewarding and quite often enjoyable and definitely informative. So, I encourage people to seriously consider about it and Kevin is right, you know. What we found is when you have open discussions with many points of view, it doesn't lead to chaos. It just leads to better, better results and better approaches. It's only when you get people that have a single focused agenda that issues develop, so. And somebody's got a broad view and an interest in kids and what better thing to be interested in? It's a great place to be and a place where you can really influence a lot of people. Anything else before we move on? I will on to the consent agenda, may I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Okay, one question.
Oh, come on, you missed your window!
A question about Jeff Warrens, if I could ask Wayne about where we agreed that. On the, Wayne, on the Jeff Warrens, you have payment of the teeny fuel for fuel oils, three invoices, all invoices are the same amount of money for ten thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars. Is that a coincidence or all the same exactly?
I'd have to look into it, but I think it's a coincidence, it's probably.
It seems very unusual that it would be the three separate invoices.
Yeah, I could pull them.
Yeah, like if you would look into that.
Yep.
Anything else? So, may I have a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
Any conversation, any discussion? Alright, all those in favor, the items on the consent agenda? Now, we're on to new business. May I have a motion to accept these special education placements?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? I have reviewed the packages presented to us from the special education area and recommend its adoption. All those in favor? Motion carried. And item two is a memorandum of agreement for the HPAA.
So moved, second.
Simply, be resolved, the Board of Education, the ABRF, who is a memorandum of agreement between the High Park Central School District and the High Park Administrative Association dated six, March sixth, two thousand fifteen, regarding the way the scoring of the APPR plan is done, my slight modification. We have a motion, we have a second, that's the only discussion, all those in favor? Motion carried. And we'll move on to, will we go on ten-three and ten-four separately?
Yes.
Alright, ten-three is the proposition, one and two, one and two to be put on before the qualified voters of the district. That's the actual budget and the bus replacement schedules.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Just as a reminder, right, it's a fill-in-the-blank, when is the date we actually have to have the budget adopted by?
They move first, yeah.
Okay, so that, yeah.
Twenty-first, twenty-first.
Yeah, so that, yeah, the dollar amount will be thrown in.
We're going to have to be a point first.
Right, dollar amount will be thrown in proposition one, once we know what that is.
So, we've got, yeah, we've got a board meeting on April seventh and we have, do we have an extra vote, a meeting in there for the, for the budget in case it's needed? No? So, April seventh, our final presentation and then we'll be adopting it on the twenty-first. Alrighty, alright, all those in favor? Motion carried. I have ten-four, proposition three, before the qualified voters of the district to, this is the one we just had discussion in our discussion period about having a student join the board as a, I remember, was the term ex officiado or?
Ex officio.
Officio.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? I'm carried. We have, we're presented with a template of the notice of the annual meeting of the district, which is the vote to be held on?
May nineteenth.
May nineteenth.
And then we got to go with draft two now since we approved proposition three.
Yes.
Yep, so you're looking at.
So, we're going to look at it at the draft two option.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion carried. We're back.
You're going to have to postpone those.
Alright, yeah. There were two student issues that were to be addressed at this point, but because of the change in times, the board did not have an exec session prior to the board meeting to discuss these things, so these two items will have to be postponed at this time.
Mr. Vice President, I move that we remove items ten-point-six and ten-point-seven from tonight's agenda.
So, completely removed or executive session after and come back?
Completely removed.
Okay.
Alright, so we ought to look at a date. I'm looking at that.
Point four, we need a second before we can discuss this.
Second. We need to look at a date for, you know, when we want to meet, you know, whether we want to wait till the next meeting or if that's going to fill up, do we want to do a special meeting? You know, an exec session to address these two things and I want, you know.
I'd like to set a special meeting for sometime next week. That should give us ample time to study the materials privately and then we can need to discuss.
Can be done early and, you know, doesn't have to be done.
You limit it to Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday.
Right, oh, yeah, I agree, I hear you there.
I'd like to limit to Monday, Monday or Tuesday because they, quite a bit of preparation on Wednesday for going into the.
Yeah, so.
Anybody opposed to a Tuesday evening meeting?
I don't, I think, I think I'm fine with that, let me just check, but I think so.
Five or six?
Yeah. No, it's here. No, it's for, no, it's for the student disciplinary issues. I don't have any going on, so I don't care about, what's everybody else's thing?
I'm fine, Jim. What, now what time is it?
Five thirty?
Yeah, that's better than five.
Yeah.
Tuesday, Friday?
Yep.
Tuesday, five thirty?
Yeah.
Alrighty. How quickly we were, we've got a whole different show.
Yeah, that'll be good, they'll give the review, we'll retire and give it appropriate review and get a decision before the school returns to.
Not, not that the same person get documentation to us, Debbie.
We have it.
We have it.
Yeah, we have.
It's all set.
It's all here online.
It is online, alright, okay.
Yeah, but it's going to be removed quite after the meeting.
Okay.
Why is that?
You can only review it together in a group. So, it was put there just because you went into the meeting.
Oh, I get you, okay.
Yeah, you're really not.
Yeah, 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 okay, I'm with you, yep, okay, gotcha.
Go here when you went into it.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. I was wondering why it showed up the last minute, okay, I'm with you, yep, it's fine.
So, will we not be able to review it in advance?
No.
Yeah, so you.
Does that change in the law? Because this is not the first superintendent's hearing that we've appealed that we've heard
Right, it's been a while.
and we've always, and we've always been able to review the material in advance.
But I did receive an update today. I've worked with the attorneys to clarify the process and you can only review it together as a group in exec session.
With nobody else, including, including the superintendent, you know, right?
No, no employee of the district, just the whole group.
And I think the idea is, I understand, I'm in the pain because you got to read through everything and listen to the transcripts, but the idea is so that, I know how it's been done before, whether it was right or not, but the idea is that, that you're not individually forming opinions and it's kind of like a jury, if you will. And you're not going to try to snoop around and get information because of what you learned individually. In other words, we collectively review the record and decide that based on that record collectively, we uphold this decision, do we modify it, vacate it, whatever, so.
And so, the total idea behind that is that you are reviewing exactly what was reviewed during the initial hearing? So, you are not privy to any other information? So, your decision is based solely on what the decision was based on prior?
Yeah, what the hearing officer decided, right?
What the hearing officer and.
The record, yeah.
Yeah, the total, the same exact record.
Just out of curiosity, more for planning purposes, those, I saw there's two recordings on here for, you know, the actual, so it's not a transcript or reading, we're going to listen to the hearing, how about, how long are they?
The, um.
How long have the hearings lasted, do you know?
There's, in addition to the audio that is on there, there's two videos and they're about seventeen minutes apiece.
What, the videos or the audio?
Um, the video. I mean, audio is probably a little bit less than that.
Okay, alright, so it's not unreasonable then, okay.
Do you have the opinion, the attorney's opinions that you can share with us?
I can't.
Because this is appalling turn of events.
Well, the law's the law, though.
That may be, but it's a change in practice. I'd like to understand the basics for it.
I did specifically ask Debbie before this one to review the process because I felt it had been too long since the process was reviewed and I wanted to make sure that we weren't doing something, we were just, we just kept, a few times it comes up that we have a board review of superintendent's hearing. We just couldn't figure this out and I just didn't feel comfortable with that. So, I did ask her to get the opinion on how we're supposed to be doing this because it's been about three years, I think, since the last one.
It's certainly not my.
It's been exactly three years?
Certainly not my intention to circumvent the law.
Right.
On the other hand, the ability to listen to the audio and repeat as often as I want and deliberate by myself on the materials presented has always been a very valuable asset to me. Especially the first time I was subject to the process. So, I really mourn the loss of that kind of time to consider the issue.
But, yeah, you know, their rights are first and it's no different than, like you said, in the jury trial where, for example, you know, we're locked in a room as a jury and, you know, you can't go off and hear evidence that the rest of us can't hear, so, you know.
Well, okay, that's talking about the moral and ethical position of the board members subjected to the process and our duties.
But the other aspect of that is that you're not supposed to have any of the information yourself. So, that's why I put it on there right before you went into exec and would remove it as soon as you were done reviewing it.
Fair enough.
Yeah, yeah, really, student or personal records, we're only supposed to be able to see when we're convened in an executive session.
If you could share the.
Attorney I worked with today, I mean, I pretty much took it by verbatim from her.
So, if you could share your attorney's opinion, I would appreciate it.
I'm, I'm going back to public participation.
Did we vote on that, that motion?
The motion was to postpone correctly until that date, we already set the date, remove and also, why doesn't that kind of modify the motion to also establish the date of the meeting?
You have to vote on the first one.
Alright, we'll do that.
Or I'll accept his statement as an ad hoc friendly amendment.
Ooh!
Right, you know, the date matter.
I scare way too fancy on this.
Good words.
Therefore, the motion on the table now is to remove agenda items ten-point.
Six and ten-point seven?
Six and seven.
From the current agenda?
And furthermore, to set a date for consideration for next Tuesday at five-thirty.
Right.
Here at the district board, should be the thirty-first, March thirty-first.
I sent a letter today as protocol that it was going to be reviewed, so I'll have to send another letter.
Alright, there's no other discussion, may I have a vote, all those in favor? Motion carried. Now moving on, kind of, back, may I have a vote to enter public participation?
So moved.
Of proposition.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? We are back in public participation, anyone would like to address the board? We've carried them all out, God bless us.
Can everybody rush the mic at once?
May I have a motion to exit public participation?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Are there any other matters deemed necessary by the board? I take the silence as a no. Any board, board subcommittee reports presented?
The tech subcommittee met and it's the first time we met in several months, so it took us a while to remember what we were working on and why. But we originally, we eventually came back around to the ideas and one work item that was generated was that we're going to try to schedule a, a site visit to a school that's already implemented a one-to-one program. Meanwhile, we are trying to formulate a technological and be prepared for next meeting.
And Steve, I know we're circled back over at that meeting, but we are going to try and put together at least a half day, if not two half days, to hammer out the plan in order to get our two million dollars in the tech funds. We have to have that planned down by June twelfth. So, we'll be putting together some extended meetings, maybe bringing some food to keep people going because we certainly.
Food is good.
Food is good.
We also had a policy meeting this week. The P R C is the main trust to it, we've got quite a few policies that should be up for first reading at the next board meeting.
We also modified the policy that was recommended for revision during our audit committee meeting.
Alright.
That's right, the audit committee met this week.
Yes, Kevin.
And so, the internal audit was complete and there'll be, on the next agenda will be a recommendation to adopt it and also adopt Wayne's recommend correction act of, corrective action plan.
So, we accepting the audit and adopting the correction plan, alright.
It'll be on the agenda, so the materials will be provided to the board.
Upcoming meetings, we finalize the next special ed committee meeting, it's going to be held at nine-thirty on April sixth. And, anyone else?
I think there's no facilities meeting on April first, I, I'm not.
We have a last night.
That's what I thought, yeah, so it's on the agenda, it's April first, but that's not happening.
I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? Everybody say yea at once. All those in favor? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you for coming, everyone.